Good evening and welcome to the Monthly Board of Education Meeting for Elizabeth City Pasquotank Public Schools. ECPPS is a progressive public school district committed to reimagining education so that all students are given choices to discover and explore their hopes and dreams. And now to begin the meeting, Board of Education Chairperson Angela Cobb.
Good evening everyone and welcome back to us as we return to open session. At this time, would everyone please stand for our Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silence. Thank you, you may be seated. To begin this evening, I need a motion on the floor to amend the agenda for August 25th to move our roll call and ethics awareness statement to this position, please.
Send it.
Okay, we have a second.
Second.
From Dr. Williams, we have the motion from Ms. Perezza. Any discussion about this amendment? If not, please signify your positive vote with a show of hands. Let the record reflect that that is a unanimous vote. And now we will move on to our roll call.
Angela Cobb.
Hang on just a second.
One second, we'll need to approve the agenda.
That's what I thought, I just wanted to make sure. All right, we also need a motion now to approve the agenda.
Send it.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to approve with Ms. Warden and Dr. Williams has seconded. Do we have any discussion? If not, please signify a vote to approve tonight's agenda with a positive show of hands. Let the record reflect that vote is unanimous. Now we will go to roll call. Ms. Bundy.
Angela Cobb.
Here.
Pam Perezza.
Here.
Dr. Sheila Williams.
Present.
Tommy Old.
Here.
Angelique Bowden, not present. Valerie Boe.
Here.
And Sharon Warden.
Present.
Cheyenne Barrett.
Present.
Natalie Gallup.
Here.
And Katherine Hutte.
Here.
Thank you, Ms. Bundy. And now, Dr. Williams, will you read our ethics awareness statement, please?
It is my duty to remind members of the board that it is your responsibility to avoid all conflicts of interest and potential conflicts of interest in accordance with Chapter 138A of North Carolina general statutes. As public servants, it is your duty to continually monitor, evaluate, and manage your personal, financial, and professional affairs in such a way as to ensure the absence of conflicts or potential conflicts. Does any member know of any conflict of interest or potential conflict of interest with respect to any matter coming before the board today? If there are no conflicts identified, let the record reflect that no conflicts exist.
Thank you, Dr. Williams. And now we are going to turn things over to Dr. Parker for our recognitions this evening.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and we're going to begin with some recognitions for our incredible child nutrition program. And I believe Ms. Haynes is going to bring Tammy and team forward.
Chair Cobb, Vice Chair Perezza, good evening. And at this time, I am going to just turn it over to Ms. Tammy Ryan-Hart, our School Nutrition Director, to tell you a little bit about our summer feeding program, some of the awards that they've won over the summer, and just give you an update overall on what they've been doing.
Thank you so much. I don't, do I have to say that Chair Cobb and Vice Chair Perezza? I get so confused and so embarrassed. Thank you so much. I have an amazing team, I have the very best. And I've been, I've been tooting their horn. We have the best team in the state, we really do. Right now, I'm going to, I'm going to give you just a few highlights. We had some scholarship winners this year. Ms. Crystal, Crystal Turner will come up and join me. Crystal just found out before the meeting, she was awarded a $2,500 educational scholarship from the School Nutrition Foundation. So proud of Crystal. It's a hard... She also won in June, the Tim Green Memorial Scholarship. This is a scholarship that is given every year in memory of Tim Green, who was a friend, a dear friend to School Nutrition Association and one of their biggest advocates in a passionate entity to the School Nutrition Association Legislative Action in Washington DC. And Crystal has won an award, won in the state for a scholarship, a thousand dollar scholarship to attend our Legislative Action Conference this year in DC. So I'm so proud of Crystal. Ms. Amber Hart, she won our Dr. Lynn Harvey First Timer Scholarship, and that provides three scholarships each year to up and coming members in SNA to attend our national, our annual conference. And that covers her registration, a $500 stipend, and just promoting our leadership from, from within. And Amber could not join us. The rest of my ladies made it today because it's the first day of school and they are killed. They've been there since six o'clock this morning, they're all bowing out. But I am so proud of Amber. She is the Assistant Manager at PW Moore, and she is the manager of the supper program there, does a fabulous job. Our USDA awards, we won two of them this summer. The first one is the innovation in the preparation of school meals. And this award recognizes schools who prepare scratch recipes using local ingredients. And they highlighted a few of our recipes here. Pico de gallo, kale with garlic and Parmesan, and collard greens, the way we do them. So I'm proud of the ladies. This is, this got, this award is, just acknowledges what they already do, but they do it with excellence. And it's great for me to say, oh wow, you're awesome. But when somebody from USDA and from, you know, from our national representatives say, wow, they're doing a great job, then they, then they're, you know, it's, it's better, it's better than just Tammy telling them. But we also won the Turn Up The Beat Award. And this was from, we won the Turn Up The Beat Award last year from the state. And this one is from USDA. And this was one award out of 199 across the nation, and seven that were in, that were in the state of North Carolina. We won the Bronze Award. It's to recognize outstanding summer nutrition programs across the nation that go above and beyond to offer high-quality meals that are appetizing, appealing, nutritious to children, and incorporate locally grown foods into the meals and snacks that engage students. So I'm really proud of this, this is great. I didn't tell you the innovation in preparation of school meals was one in nine. And then this one is one in 199. Our summer meals update, we kicked off the summer in June, the day right after school let out, we started our summer feeding program. We fed five, 57,597 meals this summer with 13 ladies, well, 12 ladies and one man. Ms. Stephanie Johnson at Central, and her team was Natasha Bryant, Donnie Bryant, Valerie Stanley, Stacy Poole is our manager at ECMs, her team was Brittany Scanyel, and Joyce Hooks, Kimberly Anderson, and Juliet Godfrey. Shirley Williams, our manager at PW Moore with Amber Hart, Dolores Brumsey. Yolanda Banks headed up our, we had to have a whole special team just to do the library. And she was the manager of the library group with Summer Bright, Jerry Newburn, and Matt Eckert. I'm really, really excited for our team. They are doing great things and they're getting noticed. And we just want to highlight all the good things that ECPPS is doing. And it takes, it takes a community. And I tell them all the time, it's the most important thing, the most noble profession to feed a child so that they can learn. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Ryan-Hart. We are at the portion of our meeting for public comment this evening. Ms. Bundy, did we have anyone sign up for public comment?
No ma'am.
Okay, thank you so much. So with that being said, I will now turn it over to Dr. Parker for the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I also want to thank Ms. Ryan-Hart again and team for everything that they've done to really just move the needle on making sure our children have well-balanced, healthy meals and that every child eats when they're in school. And that means a lot. So Tammy, thank you for everything that you guys have done. And I was able to see some of our breakfast and lunch today in the school, so appreciate you guys for all of the work you do. We are so excited about a wonderful first day of school. I could not be more proud of the first day for our traditional schools and our early college having began a little over two weeks ago. So Jennifer paved the way for us, and today we kicked off with everyone else. But a really, really smooth day of school by and large. You know, the first day of school is always going to have some unknowns. But we have done really well today on transportation of many, of many things. So I want to give a big shout out to our Transportation Department. Amanda, I would imagine at this point, all the buses have cleared, so we've got a thumbs up there. All the kindergartners got home, so that's good. You know, the kindergartners, they've never ridden a bus before, many of them, unless they were in pre-K. So we've paid special attention to make sure you get on a bus, you come home on a bus. And that's a big goal for us on the first day and every day. So we've done really well today. Excuse me, we had a driver for every route. We did a little shuffling in the afternoon, but Amanda was able to pivot there and a quick, quick notice there. But to shout out our department, I was in some schools this morning, and our elementary schools take in at 7:30, and it had just about hit eight. And in the elementary schools I were in, all the buses had arrived, all the kids were in class, which is a major milestone for us, on the first day anyway, but a major milestone because in years past, we've not had a driver for every route that we needed. And so we had people doing double runs. And so that's just a huge accomplishment to try to get more of our kids here on time, get them home on time. So Amanda, thank you for the work you've done there to keep making that happen. We also today, I was looking around the room here, I see Kelly over here, I was, I saw Katina earlier, Kalina earlier, but Kalina isn't with us. But we also had a really exciting day on the first day of the first micro school in the district that we've ever had, that was right here across the way here at Pasquotank Elementary. And about 25 of our students in the micro school were just loving life today. And so wonderful, wonderful first day in the new micro school. And would love to invite the board and anyone else here to come visit that school in the days ahead as we really kick it off. So some, some exciting things that are, that are going on there. As we look into the rest of the week, a couple of things I would mention to the public or parents or anybody that's joining us. One is that if your child would like to ride a bus, then you can go on our website and on our homepage, you can go to the transportation page, and you can complete the bus rider form electronically. And once you submit that form, it goes directly to the Transportation Department, and then they will route you on a school bus as soon as possible. You don't have to call the school, don't have to call the office, you can do it all electronically. And as soon as you've done that, Amanda works through that with her team every day to route kids on buses. The reason it doesn't move sometimes, like in an hour you can be on a bus, is because sometimes you get added to a bus, that bus might have to change their route, and you might have to modify the route. Well, the driver doesn't know that until the driver gets the new route. So it takes a moment for these routes to evolve, and so for families that are working with transportation, just know that's a part of the process. If anybody has extraordinary transportation circumstances, then we want you to call us and we're going to try to expedite as soon as we can on some of those things. So I want to mention that right there. Also want to say that for families that are enrolling their child or moving to the school system or needing to enroll their child, you can go to our schools and do that, you can also do that online. And we are processing a lot of enrollments right now, and that's a good thing. But our goal is to get you in school as soon as possible when you enroll. But again, like transportation, you can't expect, potentially you can't expect to come on the same day and start school the same day that you're enrolling, because we have to roster your child, have to sign a class, and have to do some things. So for folks that are doing that, we want you to continue to work with us, and we're going to get your child in school as soon as possible. So let us know that that's one thing that's working on right there. I'm thankful for the central office and our principals and all of our leaders that have really made today just be a tremendous first day of school. We're excited about some things to come, so we're going to keep rolling. But to all those that put in some long hours over the weekend and then got up early this morning so we could have a really smooth school day, I'm very grateful. So for all those people, thank you. Madam Chair, that concludes the report.
Thank you, Dr. Parker. And now we are going to come to an exciting part of our evening, and I'm going to turn things over to Vice Chair Perezza as we get the opportunity to introduce you to our new student board members.
Yes, thank you Chair Cobb. Tonight we get to welcome our student board members to their first official meeting of the year, the 25-26 school year. All of them have started their senior years, and we're excited to have you here with us tonight. We'll start with Natalie Gallup from the Elizabeth City Early College. Since early college started first, we'll let you go first and introduce yourself and let us know how things are going at the early college.
Good morning, everyone. Oh, excuse me, good evening, everyone. I'm Natalie Gallup, and I'm the Student Board Representative from the early college. I'm happy to share that we've had a strong start to our school year. Our enrollment numbers have increased, and we're excited to welcome 43 new students to our community. They have been adjusting well and quickly. Additionally, when COA was temporarily closed last week, from Monday, August 21st to Thursday, August 24th, our students and staff transitioned well to virtual learning. We did Google meets and did assignments on Canvas. Lastly, I'm excited to share how thrilled we are about the new partnership with the YMCA. Our students attended orientation at the YMCA and are excited to use their free passes. Thank you all for making this opportunity available for all the, for all of the early college students.
Thank you, Natalie. And next we'll have Cheyenne Barrett from Pasquotank County High School.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Cheyenne Barrett. I am now the ECPPS Student Board Representative for Pasquotank County High School, and I'm super excited for the 2025-2026 school year. To start off, last Friday, our school won our first football game against John A. Holmes, 21 to 14. And we are super, super excited for what our team has to come. Next, our Air Force JROTC class is now considered a new CTE course with a great new staff this year, while also offering classes to the eighth graders over at ECMs for our second year. Our PCH DECA Club will now be collaborating with Northeastern's DECA Club more often this year, as they have just started their new DECA chapter. We are now, we are also able to have our freshman orientation while also introducing our ECPPS family to our new power system, Infinite Campus. A couple of our new opportunities that we've had with our new class of 2026 school year, we have had the opportunity to have our senior event called, our first senior event called the Senior Sunrise, for all, for all of us to come together and do the last first day one more time. And one last thing before I forget, it is our school's anniversary year. As we celebrate our 25th anniversary, stay tuned and look forward for events coming soon to celebrate this big milestone. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Cheyenne. And now we'll have Katherine Hutte from Northeastern High School.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Katherine Hutte, Northeastern Student Board Member. Over the summer, DECA hosted a back-to-school bash, which was very exciting. Freshman orientation and open house ran smoothly last week. In sports news, we're looking for a new tennis coach, and volleyball's had two wins while football's had one. SGA has also set up themed football game nights, so be sure to come out to those. For the first day of school, everything went very well and students seemed motivated. We've also received clear backpacks to save time in the morning when we go through the metal detectors. Thank you.
Great, thank you, guys. We look forward to working with you this year and hope that your school year has started off well at all of your schools, and we appreciate your reports tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Perezza, and welcome, we're glad to have you. Thank you for your reports. Now we're going to move on to the approval of our consent agenda this evening. I need a motion on the floor to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I'll make a motion.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Old, can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Warden. Any... Thank you, Ms. Warden. Any discussion? If not, please signify a positive vote with a show of hands. Let the record reflect that that is unanimous. Thank you. And we are going to move on this evening to a piece of unfinished business. And what we are going to do is ask Ms. Haynes, Ms. Haynes to come up and, and just give us a brief on this piece of unfinished business.
Chair Cobb, Vice Chair Perez, and Board Members, good evening. So this is a follow-up from the last meeting where we presented Policy 3200, Selection of Instructional Materials for First Read. And just to give a summary of the revisions that we talked about last time, the revisions to this policy changed the reference to textbooks to be core instructional resources and expanding the policy from two categories, which was textbooks and supplementary materials, to three categories, core instructional resources, supplementary materials, and school library collection materials. Under Section A, you'll see the change from textbook to instructional materials and the principles that will govern the selection of all materials. Section B defines what core instructional materials are and delegates the selection to Central Office Services using the principles and processes you'll see defined in Section C, selection of supplementary materials. Section D was added includes school library collections and there are no changes to Section E. And language was added to Section F just for clarification. So are there any questions to the revisions?
Okay, if there are any questions, we will ask again. But let's first start with the motion. We need a motion to approve the revisions to Policy Code 3200, the selection of instructional materials as presented.
I make a motion to approve the second, I mean, not second, the Policy 3200 revision, selection of instructional materials.
Thank you, Vice Chair Perezza. Do we have a second?
team, and ECSU volleyball team cheering on. And welcome everybody back for a fantastic
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Williams. Now, do we have any other discussion? Okay, if not, please signify a positive vote with a show of hands. That vote is unanimous.
school year.
Good morning. Welcome back. How are you?
Today's exciting because it embarks a new journey for all students, all staff,
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Haynes. And now I'm going to turn it back over to Dr. Parker
to have an amazing year of learning, growth, and relationship building.
First day of school!
for one more piece of unfinished business before we move on.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I'd be remiss, but I overlooked in the superintendent's
Good morning, everyone. This is our first day at school here at PW Moore, where our new motto is "We are one school, many voices, with infinite possibilities." We're
comment here, one important thing I wanted to share. So Caroline, if you would cue up the video, Benny was here with us all, excuse me, Benny was here with us all day today,
looking forward to a great year. Let's go Lions!
Welcome back!
Morning!
started bright and early this morning and was able to visit a good amount of our schools.
What's day at school?
First day of school!
Not every school, but visited a good amount of our schools and has prepared a recap summary
Welcome back to school! So glad you're here. Happy meeting this year!
of today. And so we'd like to share this video with you. We'll be posting this online,
It's the first day on Elizabeth City Middle School. Welcome back!
but wanted to make sure you were able to see it here. So a nice recap for the day
Yeah!
We are excited to welcome in the new school year. Our Yellow Jackets came in this
and we'll kick it off, Caroline. Thank you.
morning buzzing and ready to rock and roll this year. We are excited to be in our second year of our NYPD program. And all of our students experiencing Spanish and also our global initiative this year. We wish everyone a happy, excited, and safe first day of school.
I'm so excited about the first day of school for the 2025-26 school year. I'm right here at our brand-new micro school. And behind me, 25 of our young people are excited about the first day. They are kicking off the first day, the inaugural class in our brand-new micro school. You're going to get an opportunity to see some of the cool things that they're up to. But all across the district today, we've had young people come into their classrooms for the first day of the school year, excited, fired up, and ready to go.
Welcome back to the first day of school. It's going to be a great 25-26 school year. The JC Sawyer Dolphins are riding the wave to student success.
Hype them up! Say you enough, even when it's tough. Got a lot on your plate, but you still showing up. Raise hands for the questions and two for the lessons. Best behave, get the attention. All my kids get the blessings.
And as you can see, a lot of energy and excitement today. And we're just going to carry that on for 179 more days. So we've got enough energy stocked up to get us through, I think. Thank you, Madam Chair.
All right, that sounds good. We're going to move on now to our new business and Ms. Haynes is going to walk us through some of that.
Okay. Tonight, we're presenting revisions to Policy 4313 to the board. And we've done a presentation on this policy because we are going to ask that the board take action on this policy tonight. And there's, there's been a lot of talk and discussion about this. So we wanted to, to go through this policy in detail and make sure that we give everyone a chance to ask questions that they may have. So changes to Policy 4318 are a result of General Statute 115C-7610, which requires the boards to have a policy that prohibits students from using or displaying wireless communication devices or having them turned on during instructional time to establish, and to establish consequences for violation of the policy. So we're required to submit this to DPI by September 1st. And we have been working with the board attorney on the revisions that we're going to present this evening. So we have worked directly with our attorneys and with School Boards Association. So really, I want to point out that what this does is it really kind of clarifies the current policy that we already have. It is not more restrictive than what our current policy is. It just adds a lot, a level of clarity and to what we, what we already have in place. So, next slide, Caroline. So I want to give a shout out to Sandy Kinsel, who wasn't able to be here with us tonight and present this, but she did take the lead on this project and this presentation, helping pull this together. So she's been working really closely with our high schools and on this, on this project in particular, our high school administrators to gather their input and feedback on practices, what's going on in the schools, and how they felt about this. So after she, after she met with them and we met with them and we gathered their thoughts and the policy was drafted, from the board attorney, we did share that with all the administrators so they could see it and give us any recommended changes and feedback that they have. The goal, of course, is to be consistent amongst schools. So what we didn't want is for two high schools to be doing different things, two middle schools to be doing different things. So we wanted to make sure that everybody was on board and ready to go at the start of school. So again, the purpose of the policy, the revision that we're going to present to you tonight outside of the policy that's already in the manual, it really clarifies the purpose. So you'll see an increase in the introductory portion of the policy because it really talks about the promotion of digital literacy, citizenship, and healthy digital habits. Really, what this, what we want to do with this or what the law, the intention of the law with this is to limit classroom distractions. So we want you to, we want kids to focus on instructional time when it's instructional time. And this, of course, is to support a safe, focused learning environment. The policy, the revisions to the policy define what a wireless communication device is generally, but it specifically lists cell phones, tablets, laptops, paging devices, two-way radios, and gaming devices. And then, of course, we want to partner with our families on this. So what we, what we want from families is we encourage you to seek other alternative methods for communication. So schedule changes in things where you may text your student directly. We want you to go through those formal channels of communication, communicating with school personnel through the, the chains of command of communication that they put in place. Again, promote student focus and uninterrupted class time. And just, we hope that families will go ahead and talk with their students and make sure that everybody understands the policy. Just to put this out, this is not a ban on cell phones. Cell phones can be used in schools, so you can have your cellphone with you. It just has to be turned off during instructional time. The policy also has exemptions that are listed in there. So if your student has an IP 504 health plan, needs it for any type of safety or translation needs, they could have permission to use their cellphone through, through those mechanisms. And of course, if they're authorized by staff to use it for anything, for a brief interaction that they may have to have. If it is authorized by the teacher for instructional time, they can use their cellphone. And of course, we would never permit 911 emergency phone calls from being made. Other times when you can use it, of course, before and after school, non-instructional times like lunch. And then it is permitted on use on the bus. However, you can't have your volume turned up on the bus. You have to have a headphone or earphone in and still be able to hear the driver. So you can't have it turned up so loud that you can't take instructions from the driver. The policy also requires that consequences be laid out for misuse of phones. And so what this does is it basically, in the policy, gives you what's going to happen if your phone is confiscated. So, and this is a little bit less restrictive than what we currently had. So the first consequence, of course, after verbal warning is temporary confiscation, which means that the teacher can take the phone in the classroom. And the teacher would then give the phone back to you at the end of the class period. Repeat violations could, would result in longer confiscation. And this is where school administrators would step in and have the phone, then the phone would have to go back to a parent. And then, of course, any serious misuse is going to fall under Policy Code 4300, the Student Code of Conduct. Again, just this policy touches on the rights of free speech under the policy. The student is responsible for their own device. That's in the current policy now, but it just again states clearly that the student's responsible for the vice, the vice that they have at school. The board is not liable for loss, theft, or damage. That's also currently as is. And that freedom of speech is protected. Any grievance that would be held up under Policy 1740-4010. Again, and this is actually governed under Policy Code 4342, Student Searches, but it does say that searches, searches are permitted if there's a reasonable suspicion of law, of rule of law or policy violations. Again, governed under Student Searches policy. And that really sums up the policy as presented. So are there any questions about the current policy revisions?
So in order for us to move forward on this, we are going to have to take several steps because since this is a first read policy, we are going to have to suspend a policy in order to take action on this policy. So I'm going to try to walk us through that. So first of all, we need a motion to suspend Policy Code 2420, which is the adoption of policies. And by suspending that policy, that will allow us to take action on this one as a first read. So that's the first motion we need on the floor.
I'll make a motion to suspend 2420.
Okay. We have a motion by Mr. Old, a second by Vice Chair Perezza. Do we have any discussion on the motion to suspend the policy? Okay, if not, please signify your positive vote with a show of hands. That is unanimous. Okay, now, because that policy is suspended, we can now take action on this policy. So what we need now is a motion to approve the revisions to Policy 4318, Use of Wireless Communication Devices as Presented.
I make a motion to approve the policy revisions to Policy 4318.
Okay. We have a motion by Vice Chair Perezza. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Warden. Any discussion on the revisions to Policy 4318? Okay, please signify a positive vote for this policy by a show of hands. That is unanimous. Now, in order to continue with our business this evening, we need to reinstate Policy 2420, adoption of policies, so that it does not impact any of our future policies we're taking business on tonight. So we need a motion on the floor to reinstate Policy 2420, adoption of policies.
I'll make a motion to reinstate Policy 2420.
Thank you, Mr. Old. Can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Williams. Any discussion on the reinstatement of the policy? If not, please signify a positive vote with a show of hands. Let the record reflect that that is unanimous. Okay, now, because that policy is suspended, we can now take action on this policy. So what we need now is a motion to approve the revisions to Policy 4318, Use of Wireless Communication Devices as Presented.
I make a motion to approve the policy revisions to Policy 4318.
Okay. We have a motion by Vice Chair Perezza. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Warden. Any discussion on the revisions to Policy 4318? Okay, please signify a positive vote for this policy by a show of hands. That is unanimous. Now, in order to continue with our business this evening, we need to reinstate Policy 2420, adoption of policies, so that it does not impact any of our future policies we're taking business on tonight. So we need a motion on the floor to reinstate Policy 2420, adoption of policies.
I'll make a motion to reinstate Policy 2420.
Thank you, Mr. Old. Can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Williams. Any discussion on the reinstatement of the policy? If not, please signify a positive vote with a show of hands. Let the record reflect that that is unanimous. Okay, I think that that's all we need with that one. And we're ready to move on to our next piece of information, which is the policy revisions.
So we'd like to also recommend for first reads, some policy revisions, and ask that the board take action at these, on these at the September meeting. A brief summary of the policy revisions that have been submitted, Policy 1310-4002, Parental Involvement. Under Section D, Parental Permission Required, it adds number 12 that relates to students sharing sleeping quarters with a member of the other biological sex during any activity or event authorized by the school unless the member of the other biological sex is the student's immediate family member. The next, Policy 3210, Parental Inspection of and Objection to Instructional Materials, clarifies reference to parents, revises the process for parental review, providing a timeline and, when necessary, an extension of time, adds a reference to Policy 3510 and adds the new state law that allows parents to identify any library books their student is prohibited from borrowing and that library catalogs be accessible by parent, or to parents online, and ours are. Policy 3320, School Trips, same clarification as the policy above 1310 on sleeping quarters. Policy 3510, Religious-Based Exemptions from School Programs, revises language to be more clear on student exemptions from assignments and activities based on religious exemptions, and adds a section that if the student is excused from a classroom discussion or activity, they'll be provided an alternative activity or assignment. Policy 3620, Extracurricular Activities in Student Organizations, clarifies the sleeping quarters as stated above. Policy 4120 adds new statutory requirements in Section D regarding enrollment of children of military families. Policy 5024, 61277266, Emergency Epinephrine Delivery Systems, changes auto injector devices to delivery systems, and this is so nasal sprays can be included. Policy 57, 507073, 7350, Public Records Retention, Release, and Disposition, Updates the Description of Public Information and Employee Personnel Files in accordance with change in state law. Policy 6125, Administering Medicine to Students, again, same reference of change in auto injector to delivery system. Policy 6340, Transportation Service Vehicle Contracts, as the statutory information concerning criminal history checks on contracted services. Policy 7100, Recruitment and Selection of Personnel, as the statutory information about criminal history checks. And Policy 7820, Personnel Files, Updates the Description of Public Record and Employee Personnel Files. So we ask that the board read those and we'll be ready to discuss next month.
Okay, and because this is the first read, we take no action tonight. Okay, perfect. Thank you, Ms. Haynes. Next up, we have, in our new business, the budget resolution. And Ms. Tilly.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, and other distinguished board members. Before you tonight is the budget resolution for the current school year totaling $79.9 million. As you know, this has been a very uncertain budgeting year, and we have done our best based on what we know at the given time to project everything that could happen. If you, it starts with state public school fund and goes, excuse me, is at $43.6 million. Again, since this document's been created, we have already had changes from the state. So this year, as we've always done in the past, we will continue to amend the budget throughout the year. Local current expense, due to the uncertainty with some of the federal funds and the loss of some grants and stuff, this budget is appropriating fund balance of $4.5 million. That is more than what we had anticipated when we originally started the budget process back in February. But Meredith and I agree, this is a worst-case scenario and our goal is to not need that fund balance, all of that fund balance. It's a very different year for us in regards to monitoring our budgets. And I mean, we monitor them all the time, but this year is just, it's a very unique year. Federal grants, if you look at that, that is a very small It's a very different year for us in regards to monitoring our budgets. And I mean, we monitor them all the time, but this year is just, it's a very unique year. Federal grants, if you look at that, that is a very small amount for us. It's only two-hundred-and-ninety-five thousand dollars. As we've been talking about for several Board meetings, there's been a lot of uncertainty with our federal funds. And so we agreed this year that we would only put in the budget resolution the budgets that had been approved by DPI at that time. Currently, we have four million dollars in planning allotments, but the budgets that had been approved by DPI at the time we created this document was two-hundred-and-ninety-five thousand dollars. Capital outlay. Thankfully, our county is very generous to us with the capital outlay projects we requested. And you'll see at the back of this document, there's over six million dollars in current year projects, but the budget this year is twelve point five and that includes carryover projects due to timing of when we can get in buildings and do some of the major projects when students aren't in session. It's typical for our capital projects to roll over like that. School nutrition, four point two million. We did a three percent increase on that. And this budget does include salary increases. Again, our state has not passed a budget, so we are doing our best guess of what they're going to do. And so we've had to apply that in this area and four point three is what we increased child nutrition this year. And then local special revenue is three point one. Again, we've lost several grants, so that's smaller than in the past, but we are still doing, still taking care of our students and our staff and making sure that we are providing quality services. Any questions about the budget resolution?
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Tilly. We now need a motion on the floor to approve the Twenty-five Twenty-six Budget Resolution as Presented.
So moved.
Okay. We have a motion from Dr. Williams. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Warden. Any discussion or questions dealing with the budget resolution? Okay. If not, please signify a positive vote with a show of hands. Let the record reflect that that is unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you. And then our final piece of new business for this evening is the Central Elementary Bathroom Repair. And Ms. Jordan, if you'll come forward and talk us through that.
Good evening, Chair Cobb, Vice Chair Perez of the Board Members. This evening, I am here to ask for your consideration and approval to make the plumbing repairs for the kindergarten hall at Central Elementary Schools. Currently, we've been having issues with those restrooms flushing. The floor droning is backing up to the, into the building. So we have received a quote of sixty-nine thousand one hundred twenty-seven dollars and thirty-five cents to go in and replace the sewer lines in that wing of the building. Are there any questions?
Are we planning to do this work?
We were hoping to get it done this summer, but that did not work out. We have an estimated schedule of it taking approximately seventeen days and that would involve the contractors working evenings and cleaning up and having the building prepped for the students to be able to have classes during the daytime.
I have a question. Where are the students going to go to the bathrooms if these bathrooms are out of service?
Since earlier this year, they've been going down the halls to the public restrooms instead of utilizing the ones in their classrooms. It's quite a walk, so we are expediting trying to get those restroom sewer lines repaired as soon as possible.
All right. So with that being said, we need a motion on the floor to approve the quote from Kate Services totaling sixty-nine thousand one hundred twenty-seven dollars and thirty-five cents to repair the bathrooms in the kindergarten wing of Central Elementary.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Mr. Old. Can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Boggs. We have any discussion or questions? If not, please signify a positive vote with a show of hands. Let the record reflect that that is unanimous. I'd just like to take the opportunity to thank Ms. Jordan, Ms. Tilly, Ms. Haynes, and their teams for everything that you guys have done throughout the work, the course of the summer, to get us ready, and everybody else. But you guys have worked really hard and we appreciate everything that you do. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
And with that, we now would like to entertain a motion to adjourn. Okay. We have a motion to adjourn from Vice President Perez. Vice President. Vice Chair Perez, sorry. Do I have a second? It's the first day of school. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Williams. Any discussion? If not, please signify a vote with a show of hands. That vote is unanimous and we are adjourned.